Merrimack TV, are you ready? Okay. Good evening. Welcome to the October 4th Merrimack School Board Meeting. Please join me in rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My full allegiance.
To the flag of United States of America, and to the Republic where justice stands, on our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone to tonight's meeting. First and foremost, I wanted to let you know that Board members Hardy and Peters are excused. Before we go into public comments, I do have a few reminders and some ground rules. First, it was decided at our last, two school board meetings ago now, that we would now allow public comments via email. To do this, you may send an email to publiccomment@sa26.org. Again, that email address is publiccomment@sa26.org. We do require your name and address for the record on such documentation. Based on the amount of information we received tonight, our goal is always to read off verbatim the comments as we receive them. If the comments become too heavy in volume, we would have to just not read the public We would just have to not read the public comment into testimony. It's really an all or nothing proposition. Regardless, no matter what, we will put all the public comments into our minutes for tonight's meeting, and we just like to be sure to address that upfront. The ground rules for public participation are, you know, first and foremost, we are all neighbors. We all live in Merrimack and love this town, and the people sitting next to you are people you may see either at school, grocery store, at the bank, around town, and there are opinions that differ on a variety of issues as time goes on, but we are all neighbors and we all live here, so please keep that in mind. Whether in person or via email, please keep your comments concise and be clear about what you are asking of the Board. Please also direct your comments directly to the Board. Also, we ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or fewer. This will ensure that we have time to listen to all who wish to speak. If your comments are going longer than three minutes, I may give you a warning and ask you to wrap up. This is a business meeting. Speaking out of turn and interrupting people in any way while they are speaking will not be tolerated. If this happens, I may have to ask you to leave. I would never want to have to do that, but I will if necessary. In addition, I'm going to ask people to keep any applause to a minimum. This will help keep our business meeting run more efficiently if we have many speakers and create an atmosphere that will be most comfortable and orderly for all attendees. Please be respectful in your comments, keeping in mind again that we are all neighbors. We look forward to hearing what you have to say up here, and as a Board, we will be respectful to you. We just request the same in return. When residents do come to the microphone, please state your name and address for the record. We realize we may have students that wish to speak, and if you are a student, please state your first name only and only that you are a student. There is no need to state your address. I'm disappointed to have to say this, but no swearing will be allowed. It will result in immediate dismissal from this meeting. Not only do we have a student at our table here, there are other students in the meeting and families and students watch these at home. We do have time allocated this evening until 10:40 for public comments. At that time, we are going to move to the business portion of our agenda until we open up public comments again at the end of this meeting. We want to ensure we have enough time to address the business at hand, and so this may also help when you're speaking to remind you to keep your comments concise so that as many people...
Seven forty-eight.
Oh, I'm sorry, seven forty. This... I don't know. It's been a long day already, folks. You know, and finally, we will not allow any public dismarriagement of any of our district employees or of our school board members. If any comments appear to cross the line or begin to cross the line, I will ask you to step away from the microphone. If there is not compliance with my request, I will ask you to leave the meeting. Also, if I find that we are not able to have respectful or productive discussion, then I will end the public participation. I don't expect that we will have to do that. Our last meeting was very respectful and productive. And I think that that's it. So what we will do is manage it similar to what we did last meeting. I'll let someone come up to the microphone, again, state your name and address for the record, and then when that person ends, I'll switch over to Shannon to check our mailbox, and we'll alternate until one or the other ends first, and then while Shannon's reading something we may have received, an email, then the next person can go ahead and get in line at the microphone to be able to speak. So first up at the microphone, please.
Hi, I'm Representative Janine Nodder, 19 Whittier Road. I'm here with Representative Bob Healy. We just want to have visible support for the parents, and that's why we're here. Thank you.
Shannon?
Thank you. This is from a middle school student named Matthew. "I'm a student at Merrimack Middle School, and I am pro-mask. By allowing students to walk out the front door in the morning without a mask is not only putting themselves at risk, but also taking away my right to go to school in a safe and healthy learning environment. And although I personally am vaccinated, there are still hundreds of students in this town and state who cannot get the vaccine. In conclusion, masks have been proven to be effective against COVID-19, and I thank the school board for their leadership in this difficult time." Thank you.
Next up at the mic.
Jeannie Fandozy, Mitchell Street. "Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and thank you all for your service on the Merrimack School Board. Merrimack needs to join the other smart communities in our state and leave mask-wearing as completely optional for all students and staff. I won't instigate a debate on the facts and the myths of the virus, or the effectiveness or lack thereof with regard to masks. No matter which side of these inflammatory issues you may be on, it is inarguable that the lethality of COVID for those under the age of 18 is significantly less than 0.5%. It is also inarguable that no one knows the long-term efficacy nor effects of these new vaccines. What is known is that the continued masking of our children will have negative impact on their social interactions and maturation and is psychologically damaging. For those who support masking our children, keep in mind, this is the generation that will be ruling you in a decade or two. The testimony already heard in prior school board meetings from the parents and educators of our special needs children, and especially those with learning, verbal, and auditory challenges, should alone be enough to support either optional masking or no masking at all. Some of the accounts parents have shared about how their children have been mistreated and their IEPs ignored is abhorrent, and in my opinion, those staff who persecuted these children should be immediately terminated. Lastly, as a Merrimack resident, taxpayer, and voter, I request you pursue obtaining the $36,750 refund of our tax dollars already sent to Cinda's Friend at Two Revolutions, and make the temporary hold on the collaboration a definitive termination, and pursue no future relationship with this racist organization nor others like it." Thank you.
Shannon?
The next one is from Bill Finkston of Jessica Drive. It's growing back up, sorry. "Good evening, everyone. I apologize for not being able to attend the meeting tonight, as my schedule will not allow it. So instead of hearing my beautiful voice live, I'll allow it to be spoken by a Board member instead. I'll do my best, Bill. Sometimes we can, we all can be loud and angry, sometimes we can sit back and watch or we can dominate a conversation. This includes all of us, every single one of us. If you believe you are an exception, you are not, and you are part of the problem. Over the last few weeks, the theme of compromise has been encouraged in these school board meetings. True compromise is not an action which can solely take place in front of an audience. To be effective, compromise needs to be a constant, both in public and private lives. Positives: I was happy to hear that Merrimack's involvement with the racist-based Two Revolution was put on hold, and I believe investigating more of what they are about and the relationship between executive members of that organization with individual members of the Merrimack School Board warrant a deeper look. I have researched deeper into both points above, and the deeper I dig, the more troubling information I discover. I believe stopping now is the best interest of all parties. Negatives: Our community has now seen two elected officials portray actions intending to create and stir division between members of our community. One was taking pictures, videotaping, and making snide remarks, while the other took to social media to cast one side's opinion as loud and angry and the other as good and responsible. That post was quickly deleted after it became a news story. I am writing this evening to inform the Board and anyone listening that I am above, I am all of the above: loud, angry, good, and responsible. Not necessarily in that order. I sometimes get loud when I'm excited, also known as passionate. I'm sometimes angry when I see my children being led down the wrong path, also known as love. I always choose good when given the choice between good and bad, also known as being responsible. Just because I do not see eye to eye with each and every Board member does not mean that I, what I want is wrong or necessarily different, it just means I see a different path to get to the same goal. Best regards, Bill Finkston." I thought he wrote really good, too. Thank you.
Next up at the mic, please.
Hi, my name's Valerie Shaput, and I live at 191 Babusick Lake Road. We've all heard over the years, when it comes to religion, let the kids make up their own minds. When they're all grown up, let them decide what religion, if any, they want to follow. It's also been said our education system is secularly based and that religion has no place in the public schools. You know what else has no place in our public schools? Politics and activism, especially when it comes to young children. Shouldn't the same rule apply? Let them grow up, let them decide what they want to support or not to support. Parents should be the ones parenting their own children, and the school system should be teaching our children basic tools: reading, writing, math, science, history, all without bias. But here we are. You, the school board, has hired a company called Two Revolutions, whose core belief is something they call their DEI commitments, which state on their website that our education system was intentionally designed to marginalize and suppress Black, Indigenous, and people of color. Then proceeds to display a diagram to show what they consider overt white supremacy and covert white supremacy, and list examples of each. Here are some of the examples they consider to be associated with white supremacy: white silence, colorblindness, white parents self-segregating neighborhoods and schools, Eurocentric curriculum, white savior complex, paternalism weaponizing whiteness, denial of white privilege, all lives matter, make America great again, there's only one human race, really? It's crazy, etc. If this isn't a form of critical race theory, I don't know what is, and is illegal according to HB 544 in the state of New Hampshire. What could this company possibly have to offer the Merrimack School System if all of their solutions stem from this one core belief? This ideology, political activism, has nothing to do with providing an improved education to our children or enhancing their future in any way. This so-called solution, according to Two Revolution states, and I quote, "Know what it takes to transform toward future of learnings, models, and system. This is the creative engine and heart of Two Rev." End of quote. This transformation, Two Rev states, is nothing more than an attempt to indoctrinate our children and the chance to influence future curriculum, budgeting, hiring, etc., to further and advance what is their personal agenda. Two Revolution telling or expressing in any way, shape, or form a child of color that the education system, or system for that matter, has been purposely designed to be against them, and that any child, teacher, friend, neighbor who happens to be white are at the heart of such injustice is a form of child abuse. This needs to be stopped. I suggest Two Revolutions will have to try to start another revolution in some other unsuspecting town, but not here in Merrimack. Thank you. And I also support the parents who want to be able to decide for their own children whether to wear a mask or not, and make medical decisions for their children, and not be told what they have to do. Thank you.
Shannon?
Brittany Damon from Turnbuckle Lane. "I first would like to comment on the mask policy in the Merrimack School District. I will go on record again being against the mask mandates. That being said, I have felt that the opt-out option has shown some compromise from the Board to attempt to appease all involved. I am also aware of the petition filed to include the 'will not comply' statement. This was to begin on Friday, October 1st, 2021. I have not been informed of any specific instances where someone did not comply. If this was a major issue, I would have assumed that us parents would have been notified of such an event. This brings me to the new proposal for progressive discipline for failure to comply with mask mandates. I find this proposal to be extreme and unmitigated, considering the lack of issue with compliance. This feels very threatening and severe for an issue that has yet to happen. Considering any student to be detrimental to the health of others is a very extreme position. As you are aware, not a single child has died from COVID in New Hampshire. This seems much less like caring for the student population and more like proactively discourage and any resistance to your non-founded partisan health theories. As for Two Revolutions, I again go on record against this firm being brought in to transform the education, quote, 'transform the education system here in Merrimack. Aside from the fact that they have not shown any tangible results in education, such as graduation rates or college acceptance rates, their belief system does not coincide with what I believe our education goals should be here in Merrimack. I have studied their website and done extensive research into their company and cannot find any indicators that would lead me to believe that they will not be harmful to our children.' While people, including Mr. Olson, like to, um, I'm just gonna skip over that because it does not comply with our requirements to not call out staff and Board, I assure you that the DEIJ, which is the core belief of Two Revolutions, is the equivalent of CRT. Mr. Olson cites HR2 does not allow for such teaching in New Hampshire, while I would suggest that there are several ways around such laws. If our goal is to strictly adhere to HR2, then I would ask the question as to why a company like Two Revolutions, whose system is the very antithesis to HR2, was even selected to partner to Merrimack Schools. There's another part I'm going to redact because it does not comply, it's again going, referencing disparaging a member of the Board. Let's see. "The mere fact that Mr. Olson notified the public that there has been a pause on the work being done with Two Revolutions not only proves that they were already embedded with our school system and work already being done, but the sales pitch in regards to the surveys and focus groups from the community will be done after Two Revolutions has already dug into our schools. This brings me to an issue that I've had with a specific school in Merrimack that is already talking to children about their pronouns. My daughter received a get-to-know-you survey from a teacher asking what her preferred pronoun was. Then the paper asks, 'May I use these pronouns when I call home? We are now teaching our children to lie?' I mention this only because it has been brought to Mr. Olson's attention several times and has ignored this. This is also part of the mentoring that Two Revolutions is bringing to Merrimack, and it is my belief that these such questionnaires are being used by Two Revolutions to cherry-pick students to participate in surveys and focus groups on their behalf. I encourage all parents to please review their website, tworevolutions.net, and research their beliefs for yourself, and perhaps check out notorevolutions.com to see what they're all about. I do not believe at this point that a temporary pause to this contract is sufficient. I feel that their core ideas, as well as the conflict of interest, should be grounds for termination of the contract. Lastly, I wish to address the fact that all of these issues are very important to parents. I believe that all parents, regardless of personal beliefs, are always acting in what they believe to be in the best interest of their children. That being said, I find it remarkable that a school board official would be openly speaking on social media about these very parents." I'm gonna redact because again, it's disparaging by name. She encouraged her supporters to attend tonight's Board meeting and asked them, and I quote, "That everyone should show up and give these tax-paying citizens a reality check. The school board ethics policy states that members, states that my first and greatest concern must be for the educational welfare of the students attending the public schools." This does not sound like that is the objective here, sorry. "This sounds as though the member is in fact not open-minded, and her decision is a foregone conclusion regardless of any input from the citizens of Merrimack. This will only go further to divide amongst us and in no way bridge any gaps that we might have been able to bridge. This is extremely unbecoming of an elected official and would typically be grounds for removal from such positions." Thank you, Brittany Damon.
Next up, please.
Naomi Halter, 10 Everest Drive. "I spoke at the last meeting, and I don't really have anything new to add. I just wanted to be here to support the folks on the other side of this debate, because I and a lot of my friends would prefer that the school board follow the public health recommendations put forth by the New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services. But we are willing to accept the current policy as a compromise, because there's already so many people here who clearly care very strongly the other way, and we've decided that we're cool with that. I, the Two Revolutions thing is trickier. On its face, I don't think it's a good idea to suddenly realize that someone believes something differently than you and say, 'Oh, no, they believe differently than me.' We can't possibly work with them anymore. I trust the school board, I trust the school administration staff, I know that you'll make the decision that's right. I know that you're not gonna make a decision and bring in somebody who teaches things that are currently against the law in New Hampshire to teach, so if you've investigated this and you've determined that there's, that's not gonna happen, that's cool. My personal beliefs are kind of irrelevant in that, although you can probably all guess what they are." Thank you.
Any other?
I have one more, and I'll just double-check one more time before you close to see if anyone comes in. Next is Lindsey Tebow, 19 Pleasant Street. "Hello, I'm writing to first thank the Board for listening to all the concerned parents of this town, no matter their point of view, and taking the time to let their voices be heard. Although I advocate for 100% parental choice, I do appreciate the compromises that have been made. I also want to thank you for hearing our concerns about Two Revolutions and addressing them. I do, however, want to express my frustration about a recent Facebook post identified those that posed the Board members' views as loud, angry people and calling the good, reasonable people to show up tonight. These kind of statements are not only divisive, but insulting the parents that are here because we love our children and wish to do right by them. I, along with 98% of others that have spoken, have always been respectful and well-informed with good intention in our hearts. I do not appreciate being portrayed as anything other than that. I find it totally unprofessional and inexcusable for a school board member to act in this way when they are supposed to be a representative of our community as a whole." Lastly, I'd like to address the charts that were released by Mr. Olson showing the day-by-day test positivity slash absence students due to COVID-related reasons, etc. It looks to me that when I see 15 COVID student cases in a day for the entire school district and then see 150 absent students due to hypothetical COVID-related symptoms, that we need to take a look at how we are dealing with cold and flu season. Cold and flu season does still exist. Not allowing kids in education by means of quarantine due to a stuffy nose is not right, and having to obtain a negative COVID test every time this occurs by an already exhausted medical industry is quite defeat in itself. This approach is just not sustainable anymore and has to be addressed, or we'll soon see the majority of our children back at home with no means of education."
Thank you. Next speaker, please. And what we'll do now is we'll just continue to go through any speakers that are here live, and then prior to closing public participation, we will do a check. Go ahead, sir. Thank you.
That's Michael Shaput, 191 Babusick Lake Road.
Mr. Shaput?
Yes?
Could you speak more into the microphone?
Sure.
So, thank you.
Not above. I've lived in Merrimack for 26 years. I'm opposed to Two Revolution being used in any shape or form to create a new strategy for anything in the Merrimack School System. Okay? Two Revolution represents a critical race agenda and illegal ideology that cannot be taught. Their tactics are division and condemnation, using scapegoating and stereotyping. Their diversity, equity, and inclusion commitments are a destructive and negative ideology, casting blame and assuming guilt by race. Two Revolution, free speech is under attack. My hat, which says 'Make America Great Again,' represents many things. First and foremost, my pride in this country. We may not be perfect, but we always drive, drive ourselves to improve, to be better. You know, we still rep, this flag, this hat, represents freedom and democracy. Okay? And on to Revolution, this represents to them covert supremacy. It's right on their website. You're causing division. You're stereotyping. You don't owe me, you assume. You know, HB 544, in essence, was a delimit, anyone in authority, from expressing their personal views while at their job, because it's not their job. You know, May of this year, the Board chose to circumvent, to oppose HB 544, and basically bring in Two Revolution through the back door. It's, you know, the school board, you know, does not have the right to use our kids as social guinea pigs. Okay? Parents have the rights to make sure what the kids hear about morals. You know, I've coached, you know, MIA baseball, soccer for many years, and when the kids were with me, I didn't express my political views, my religious views, to them. That wasn't my job, that wasn't what I was there for. I was the coach. You know, I taught them, you know, sportsmanship, the sport, work as a team, work together. There was no division. Okay? Everything that Two Revolution stands for, their ideology will contaminate the thoughts of our kids, starting with how we pick who represents us, how we, who we pick for teachers, for the Board members, for superintendent. It's, it's very frustrating, because it's sneaky. It's downright sneaky to bring in a company that parents didn't know, that have an agenda. Our kids are not the agenda. You know, kids are supposed to have a chance to develop their minds, not be a tool for political gain or a political agenda. As for the school and the masks, parents have the right to make that choice. The numbers are all over the place, but the truth is, okay, our health is our choice. Our kids, our choice. Thank you. God bless America.
Next, please.
Robert Reisman, 8 Iris Drive. I wanted to start, just a note of positivity, just to thank the school board and staff members and teachers and everybody for, you know, all the hard work this year. You know, I've been in touch with several school board members. Everybody's been very responsive to me and to Superintendent Olson, and even to Commissioner Edelblue, whether they agree or disagree with me, everybody's been just responsive, polite, willing to discuss things, so I thank you for that. And in terms of the issues, seems like the two big ones these days seem to be the masks and Two Revolutions this time. So in regards to masks, you know, I'll probably echo a little bit what Naomi said. I do like, you know, the policy instituted by Hudson, New Hampshire, where they based it on numeric metrics, and they sort of had some guidelines set for kids who couldn't be vaccinated yet and kids who could. And I do understand we've reached a compromise right now, which may not make everybody completely happy, but I understand that's the nature of compromise, too. And in regards to two revolutions, I did some research on them. I tried to read his emails, the materials, the website, and sort of what their purpose is. And if I'm understanding it correctly, it does sound like it's mainly being used for the purposes of strategic planning, to try to innovate the school system, you know, to involve all the stakeholders, taxpayers, everybody would have a voice and it wouldn't be-- they wouldn't be dictating policy. They would be trying to get what the people of the town want and then helping to coordinate that for the future vision. And I think, I know, you know, again, I don't know everything, so if I'm wrong, people can tell me, but I figure we all want what's best for our schools and we all want our kids to, you know, be able to compete in the future, the future world. Yeah, I'm not the best speaker, but yeah, that's how I have it. So I figured that was my thought is, you know, hoping we'll make fact-based decisions, both that, both two revolutions and with the mass. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, I'm Sabrina Beebe, 81 Wyatt Road. I firstly to adjust what Jenna said. It's really hard--
Sorry, I just have a ground rule. We can't call out individual board member.
Okay, I apologize. I firstly to address what the school member did on Facebook. To me, that's really hard. We are all parents and we're supposed to be working with you. This has been a really difficult two years for all of us. I don't like being in opposition with the people that I send my kid to see every day. We should all respect each other's opinions. We can all have different opinions. It's not right. I think she owes all of us parents, no matter which side, an apology for acting the way she did. I could assume this might be why said school member is not here tonight.
I'm sorry. I'm going to have to ask you to sit down.
Okay, I'll--
I need to ask you to sit down.
Why is that?
I don't, I don't, I don't find that acceptable. I'm sorry. I don't.
I didn't say anything rude about her.
We all know who you're talking about and now you're making accusations about her attendance, so I'd like you to please sit down. Next speaker, please.
Ken Martin, 31 Woodward Road. Mine's not as heavy as that. I just wanted to say thank you. I don't know what's going on in other people's houses. We've had a great start to the school year. My son is in second grade at Master Cola. He is having a blast, loves it, and comes home with a smile on his face every day. And I just know how hard that is to get with all the factors going on right now and balancing all the opinions and whatnot. It's impossible. Like, you're never going to get it right. So I commend you for tackling it the way you have, finding some sort of compromise, where in many districts there has been very little. So it's nice to see that happening. We've just had such a great start and I really, really want to keep it that way and I really want to keep everyone's kids in the building and whatever we need to do to make that happen is A-OK with me. So thank you again.
Next speaker, please. We've got about six more minutes before we go into-- Yes, he did. Yeah.
Hi, Ashley Tenhave, 75 Shelburne Road. I spoke a couple of school board meetings ago about wanting the mass in the school and I understand the compromise and I agree that there needs to be compromise at this point in time. What I do want the school board to remember is that the fact that the numbers are going up. As a medical professional here in the community, we are seeing a lot more numbers. We're seeing a greater number of kids, a greater number of adults as well. And as somebody emailed in, yes, the medical community, we're very taxed. We are. But to not have a kid stay home and get a COVID test could then make us even more taxed. You know, it's, yes, it's unfortunate. Yes, it's an inconvenience to parents to have their kids out for whatever amount of time it takes, be it a rapid test or one of the PSCR tests. And I understand getting a test sometimes is hard. I do it all day. I know what the schedules look like. But to send a kid to school and have them be sick or have them, you know, then spread COVID, the number of tests are going to get even harder and harder to find. You know, Manchester just had their school shut down because of clusters and then we just received an email saying that there's a cluster here in Arktown as well. It's scary. It's scary as a parent and it's scary as a healthcare professional dealing with this every single day. So I just want the school board to kind of, and all the parents, to kind of sit there and go, you know, think and remember that those of us on the front line doing this, it's hard for us. We're parents, too, many of us. We have kids in school that are dealing with the same exact things. We're scared. We're scared of where we're at now and we're scared of where we're going to be. And now with the remote learning thing coming down from the state and making it so that we may not be able to go remote if a large number of kids develop this, that's also worrying, too. My son's doing amazing in school right now, being in person. He's wearing his mask and he's loving being in school and I want to do everything we can to keep him in school. Remote learning was not fun for him, but I also want to keep him healthy and keep all the other kids in this community healthy as a healthcare worker working in this and as a parent. And I just want to, you know, say thank you, guys. I know your jobs aren't easy with this and, you know, just hopefully you guys keep all the options open. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
I'll just make a quick. Kathy Comer, Belmont Drive. Last week, Merrimack, 55 cases. As of this morning, 55 cases. 0 to 9, 0% deaths. 10 to 19, 0% deaths. 20 to 29, 0.1% death. 30 to 39, 0.6% death. 40 to 49, 1.2. 50 to 59, 3.1. We don't see, start seeing double digits till we hit 60. So where her numbers are coming from, I have no idea. So that's all I got to say.
Next speaker, please.
Tiffany Castellucci, Babusak Lake Road. First, I need to ask--
Could you please just move a little closer? Just so we can hear you a little better? Thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I can. Thank you.
Okay. First, I want to say that, as we all know, masks still violate our rights under the Constitution, so I'm not sure how much farther we need to go as citizens in this community, but I think we're looking at maybe a civil suit coming up. So we need to sit and work together instead of keep pushing us back because as far as I know, you guys have gone back on just about everything you've been telling us. Now let's move forward a little bit because we still have to get a date, I believe, for the petition that we put in front of you guys the last meeting. I think we're supposed to get that today. Am I incorrect on that? Does anybody know about that? Because when we gave it to you, you said you were going to give it to the attorney and the attorney was going to look at it and you would tell us a date the next meeting.
We will have an update on where we are with that.
Okay, excellent. Also, in reference to the two revolutions, I had sent every board member that's sitting up there an email. It said the same thing to every board member. However, the way it was worded, each board member should have given their own answer. It should not have been answered by one individual. I received answers from three individuals up there that were courtesy, coming back to me, and I appreciate every single one of you that answered back to me with respect. Thank you. However, there were two individuals that did not respond to me until one of them responded me today, the other one decided to argue with me. So with that being said, the school board requests us to send you emails when we have comments or concerns. When I email, I expect to get the respect back in an email that you guys expect us to give you when we're standing up here speaking, which I did not get. And I'm not happy about it because I think I and every other member in this community deserves a respectful answer back. Okay? I just don't, I don't agree with what was told to me. In one of the answers, I did not, not one of my questions has anything referencing to CRT. It does not say, "Are you incorporating CRT? Are we adding CRT?" Nothing says CRT. However, one of the board members found it to address that two rev is not about CRT. So maybe you assumed that I was going, jumping to assumptions, which it never said anything, but I just want to bring you, your attention back to August of 1996, I believe it was. Does anybody remember what happened in August 1996? There was a controversial vote and at the end of that vote, it ended up the entire board being removed and a whole new board was voted in the next term because of the stuff that was being taught in our school system. And that is still being taught in our school system. And each and every one of you up there needs to go back and look at what's being taught currently, not even with two rev coming in. Look at what you're teaching our kids currently because today I watched three hours, three hours of Brain Pop, which is a link that all of our kids in all of our schools in the Merrimack district have access to, they get an access code to. Okay? I watched stuff about sex. I watched stuff about black racism. I've watched stuff that I wouldn't even think about putting in front of my child when she was 18, let alone first or second grade. So if you guys really want to make it so controversial, let's start there because we already have a civil suit against this school district. So let's start working together instead of against each other so we don't have to go that far because this is not what the community wants to do. We do not want to make national news again like we did once before in 1996 because right here I have all the documents to back what I'm saying up. So please, let's work together and stop this nonsense, stop this controversial at each other's throats between this one saying that and that one saying that. Okay? We're not in school. We are supposed to be examples for these children. We're supposed to be acting as we're adults and that has not come forth at all. We have tried to step up to this plate and be as kind and reasonable as we can. And every time we do that, it gets us pushed back a little bit further. We're not going to stand here. We're not going away. We are concerned parents, okay, that, yes, we're angry because the process don't work. And people have taken it upon themselves to make their own rules, their own regulations and their own mind decisions and expect us all to follow it. That's not going to happen. So please, we ask you with respect to listen to what we're asking for. Alls we want is choice for our children across the board. We, if you want to wear a mask, go ahead. If you don't want to wear a mask, don't. Okay? Because I've seen just about every person in this room that has a mask on right now in public without one.
Just a 30-second warning.
That's all I have to say. Thank you. Have a good night and please think about the civil suits that we have.
You too. Thank you. Shannon, a quick check?
At this time, there are no emails that have come through from public comment.
Okay, we're going to move on. We'll allow more time at the end of the meeting for anyone who did not have a chance to speak. The next item is recognitions. Any recognitions?
We have no recognitions this evening.
Okay. Next item is the informational updates, the superintendent update.
All right, thank you and good evening, everyone. Just a few updates of a positive nature. First of all, I want to congratulate Thornton's Ferry Assistant Principal, Michaela Champlin. She has been selected by the Girls on the Run organization as one of the top 20 most influential people in the organization in the state of New Hampshire. Girls on the Run is a program that does involve, in fact, running, but also mentors working with students, with young females in terms of developing their confidence, developing an ability to empower them to make decisions on their own and to think on their own. And it's a well-known organization of great benefit and so I congratulate Michaela on her recognition. I had an opportunity to meet with the Rotary Club members last week. I was invited to attend their meeting. It was remote and I asked if I could attend another meeting, certainly, in person with them at such time as appropriate. They are holding their meetings remotely, but we had a very enjoyable conversation, talking about education in general. They asked me some questions about my background and I had a very enjoyable interaction with them. Kim and I, this afternoon, began our meetings and Matt will be joining us also with the staff this afternoon, with the staff of Reed's Ferry School, in anticipating of developing an understanding of the needs of our students, what they are strong at, what they need some additional help at, where we need to develop our organization in terms of academics for our students, in terms of the social, emotional, and mental health needs of our students. We are, we are talking with our staff as one of the data points of providing to you and to the community what our priorities will be for the fiscal '23 budget. That is, of course, the fiscal, the 2022, 2023 school year. You know, I've said for years that if I want to know how to improve a school system, I won't read it out of a book. I'll talk to the people who we pay to teach our children in the classrooms, who know the strengths of the students, who know the areas of need of the students. And the important thing is to listen to them because what they have to say is of great value in understanding the developmental needs of the students in Merrimack. And so we began that today. As I said, at Reed's Ferry, we will continue to meet with all of the staff over the next few weeks because I want them to know that what they do is appreciated, what they do is valued and we want to understand what they know about the students of Merrimack and I want them to tell us about how we can improve and make this an even better school system and one that you can continue to be proud of. And so that's, that's very important to us. They appreciated it very much in terms of the listening session and that's, that's what we, that's what we mentioned in the beginning, that it was a listening session. We wanted to hear what was good, but we also wanted to hear a reality check of what they feel we need to improve upon. And so I think we both, we both enjoyed it very much and I hope, hope they did also. At least they expressed their appreciation for it. Lastly, I want to congratulate football coach Kip Jackson, who worked with a number of students and football players in a fundraiser for St. Joseph's Hospital to provide some aid and raise money to benefit the senior behavioral health unit at St. Joseph's Hospital. An example of our students giving back to the community, giving back on a generational basis and we appreciate that very much. That will mean a lifetime and bring a lifetime of value and meaning to the students who participated and we congratulate them for their, for their activities. And that is it for tonight from, from myself.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. The Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Update, please.
Thank you very much. Probably would really fall under committee, but I will mention it yesterday that we had our first curriculum instruction and assessment committee meeting last week, which was very productive. We did change the name from CIT to CIA to more appropriately recognize that we're talking about curriculum instruction and assessment and technology would just be the tool for, for the curriculum and instruction and assessment. So that was very productive. We, today, all new administrators and department heads met with me, a group of 12, to do their, the EPEC training, which is the educator evaluation, observation training, and that was very productive. We had a great day of that. And then next week, we have four days whereby we're going to continue with what the former Assistant Superintendent had put in place for cognitive coaching sessions. So we'll have some staff and staff leaders and administrators participating in that training. So overall, really productive week last week and week to come. Thank you.
Lori?
So Kim, I just want to ask the question. So in our curriculum instruction, we're aligning to state standards. Is that correct? We continue to align to state standards and our curriculum doesn't have other things in there besides aligning to state standards? And our curriculum doesn't have other things in there besides aligning to state standards?
All of the curriculums that have been rewritten all align to the standards. There's some curriculum that's in the process of being rewritten and will also align to the standards. And then the programs that support the curriculum are aligned to, to the standards.
And how often do we update curriculum?
Well, being new to this position, there's been some, and with a pause with COVID, we were in the middle of updating the FIS Ed curriculum at this point and doing some final touches with the social studies curriculum. Science has been completed. And as we do updates, we would vet them through the school board with the final products that we do. So world language is to come. And I'd have to go back to my flow chart to see where else we are.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right. Assistant Superintendent for Business.
Nothing to report at this time. Thank you.
I have the school board update. I have two items. One is that we are working with McPherson and Jacobson to finalize the timeline regarding the superintendent's search efforts. Once that timeline is finalized, we will share that with the public. Second, we are still awaiting legal feedback regarding the request for a special meeting. What we've heard from our lawyer is that we are not the only district in the state that has received such a request. She's doing some additional research for us and will apprise us during a non-public meeting at some point in the near future. Any questions? Student rep update? Any updates?
I do have an update, a quite positive one, actually. The high school got approved for a homecoming dance in late October. Student council doesn't know exactly how it's going to look yet. They're thinking something along the lines of an outdoor event, maybe? And then another update is that there is lots of student participation this year in sporting events. And I think students really appreciate the normalcy in getting to do things with their friends and like have fun Friday nights going to the football games. And then my final one is that I am working on getting more in-depth updates about student life for all the parents so you guys can hear more. But that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Any questions? All right. All right, we will move on to old business, the Health and Safety Task Force update.
Thank you. First of all, Caitlin, may I say thank you for that very positive report and the fact that you have a homecoming, coming up? Because it's one of those things that you remember for the rest of your life. It's very important to you. Wanted to provide you with just a brief update as a follow-up to a question at the last school board meeting in terms of what are the metrics we're going to use to shift masking policy? As you know, we have been and continue to be in what the state Department of Health and Human Services classifies as substantial transmission by the metrics that they, they produce for Merrimack. That would warrant, you know, full masking. But, you know, this board, in its wisdom, adopted a, an opt-out policy that I think is working quite well, quite honestly. So I don't anticipate going to a more stringent type of masking policy. So let's assume that the level of transmission stabilizes or begins to decline, test positivity rate begins to decline, so that we fall in a different area of the, of the DPHS matrix. I do believe that we need to follow a consistent set of, of data criteria. And by that, I'm meaning, I'm recommending that we continue to follow the matrix, the level of community transmission matrix from the New Hampshire Department of Public Health Services. It is recognized. I think the worst thing we could do would be to make up our own set of indices that are tailored for one reason or another. I think we stick with that, that is published, that is well-known, that has buy-in from epidemiologists at the state level. And so what I'm saying is my criteria for making a recommendation to you, and I'm recommending that your criteria for changing the mask policy be us following this matrix that the state has produced, that a lot of communities are, are working with. And that at such time, as we move away from the substantial transmission, I will recommend something different to you in terms of, of masking. And I'm hoping that is, I'm hoping that sooner rather than later. You know, with the understanding that my, my job, a very important component of my job is to keep your children safe and keep our staff safe, all of the children and all of the staff. And I know we're all, we're all tired of wearing these things. There's no question about it. But I want to keep students like Caitlin and your students in school. Because that's where they belong, day in and day out, and not at home looking at a computer screen. And so I strongly recommend, we don't have to take any, you know, it's not necessarily for you to take any board action tonight unless you wish, but my recommendation is we, the masking policy that I recommend to you in the future will follow this state matrix.
Any questions? Board Member Rothaus.
So the only other thing?
Oh, you're up. You're up.
The only other thing I would add to it is when we look at vaccination rates in Merrimack right now, 63% of residents have at least one dose of vaccination, which is in the top 20% for the state of New Hampshire, which I think Merrimack should be proud of that. And I think we should continue to monitor vaccination rates.
And we, may I say, we will, we will do that every day. We check the data from the state.
Any other questions? I just had a question regarding the, I don't know if you have this information, at least, you know, generally, is what percentage of opt-outs we're getting?
Well, at, at the present time, we have, as of today, 1,213 students who have been opted out. So that's roughly one-third of our student population.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to number two, which is the second review of the update to the use of masks by students and staff policy.
May I just mention to you that in response to some questions also at a prior, prior board meeting, I did meet with the leadership team, with our school nurses, and with the Health and Safety Task Committee to provide a little bit more clarity to the document in the areas of interscholastic sports, indoors, physical education, and chorus and singing. I have made the recommendations that I have incorporated into the document in front of you for interscholastic sports through my conversations with, as I said, the leadership team, the nurses, and the Health and Safety Task Committee, that masks will be worn in indoor interscholastic sports while students are on the bench. But in Merrimack, while a student is in direct competition out on a court, for example, volleyball or basketball, masks would be optional. Now, that will differ, as you know, for other school districts that have different policies. We will have to comply with, with their mask policies. But that's what I'm recommending for indoor interscholastics. The high school administration, the athletic director feel comfortable with that. In terms of physical education, we consider that to be a classroom environment. And so what I've placed in there, that masks are expected to be worn unless a student has an opt-out that has been suggested by their, and requested by their, their parent. So essentially, we treat physical education as a classroom environment also. Chorus, a little bit, a little bit different in that we are, I'm recommending in the policy that masks be worn by all students at all times while singing, either in chorus or singing in the classroom. The rationale behind that is some researchers out at the University of Colorado did a, what is called an aerosolization study, how much moisture is emitted during the act of singing and, and how far those particles potentially travel. And I think I cited that study in the, in the document I produced for you. I think the safest course of action is to have our students doing chorus, and if they are singing in the classroom, have them masked. And I know that, you know, that might not, might not, you know, sit well with, with some parents. Is it necessarily comfortable to sing with a mask on? No, of course not. But do I think it is, based on that research study, the best thing to recommend to you? Yes, I do. And so with that, I'll, I'll answer any, any of your questions. Those are the three areas of clarity that I wanted to bring to the, the updated policy.
Board Member Barnes, and then Board Member Rothaus.
I really took to heart the testimony we were hearing about interscholastic athletics specifically. And the concern I have, and actually, it came from our pediatrician in town, and that is that kids are throwing masks on the bench and picking up each other's masks to put them on. So I worry more about cross-contamination doing more harm than good. So unless we have a practice or a, a structure in which we can keep those masks separated by, by athlete, and it sounds like we don't, right now at least, and I don't like to get into micromanaging, but this is specific, that if we're going to have a policy, we also have to make sure we have a practice that can support that policy and not cross-contaminate students.
Absolutely agree with you. I've talked with the high school administration and the athletic director about each student having a, a bag, either a paper bag or a plastic bag with their name on it, that they put the mask in when they come off the bench to go into competition. So there is not, or at least we reduce, greatly reduce that risk of cross-contamination.
Yeah. And honestly, I'm still concerned because in the match, that I, I don't, I mean, maybe it's just me being a former high school athlete, believe it or not, but just, you know, all, we just all throw our crap together, honestly. And like, so I'm just very concerned that, you know, it's actually not going to be easy to do in the throes of competition. So I would prefer, just for the sake of cross-contamination, not to have it in interscholastic athletics if, if that risk is even there. So I don't think a plastic bag or a paper bag is going to cut it, to be honest with you. It's got to be some kind of system that, that's organized. And then the other question I had about that is if I have an athlete whose parents opted out, that's not addressed here either. So...
Well, my only comment to that, Shannon, is that that, that is not technically a classroom environment.
No. So I, but the semantics are, I, I think that we basically, when we had our vote, we said, you know, the, the buses are a whole different story. That's federally regulated. We're not even going to get into that. But when it comes to the hallways, that's what we specifically instructed on. But those students, whether they're on, in a game or they're in a classroom, they're still our students. And our policy was for the, for the management of those, expectations of those students. And I don't think the splitting of the hair of that they're playing on a team instead of playing in a, in a gym should, you know, I think the parent opt-out shouldn't, that, that hair shouldn't be split.
I just have a question regarding that, that topic. And when these students are practicing, I'm assuming they're practicing with or without masks? Is that part of the?
I, I, I think, actually, we hadn't addressed practicing, but my, my opinion would be, if they're practicing, if they're out on the court in, in a simulated competition and practicing, my opinion would be we'd do the same thing, that have the option of opting out of wearing a mask.
I was just going to say, I agree with Board Member Barnes. I mean, I think that, you know, we have some reasonable precautions, we have some compromises. And I think there's a couple of areas where we have to look at things, maybe, I would say practically. And I think this is probably one of those situations. You know, these team members spend a lot of time together. If their one's going to get sick, they're all going to get sick. I don't even know that you could prevent it, even under, with the masking.
I just want, because I, I thought you were going to pipe in on that.
Oh, sorry.
Point, but no. Honestly, you're throwing the plastic bag, you're throwing a, something that would have moisture in it and something that will retain moisture. So I'm not sure it's doing any good. It can't even get air. So, so honestly, you know, when it comes down to, I, I, plastic is definitely not the way to go, but maybe mesh? I don't know. But just any cross-contamination, I think we're doing more harm than good, so.
All right, if you'd like, we'll take that back to the drawing board, that particular one.
So, and I do want to make sure that if a parent opted out, that that's not going to be like a loophole or, you know, that that's got to be made clear. Because, you know, again, we're trying to be, we're trying to be above board here about things.
Did you have another item, Shannon?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Board Member Rothaus?
I'm good.
Okay. I have one more item that I think is a possible exception, and that is in the area of foreign language. I just want to put this out here for consideration of the board and for you and the task force as it relates to those students in foreign language programs. I think it's very difficult to learn a foreign language without being able to see someone's lips. I don't know, you know, in the past, if you could think of what that would be like, would be difficult. And so I'm wondering if we want to either allow for those foreign language teachers to have a mask optional. We currently do not have mask optional for any other staff members. Or that if they prefer a mask, that they're wearing the clear mask that you would maybe be able to see through, one of those two options. But I just feel like that's one area that you just have to kind of think about something logically and practically and, and keep in mind that, you know, we are here to teach kids, we are here for kids to learn. And I feel that masking in those situations might create a barrier.
Absolutely understand. And I'll be glad, and I'll invite Kim to, to join in, certainly meeting with the foreign language staff and the department head, and talk it through with them to make sure that we receive their input and make sure it's as effective as possible for students. You know, it's in a similar manner to those who we ask to provide speech and language pathology services that are very important for students. So we'll have that conversation with the foreign language staff.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Next up is the new business. It's the 2021 Proposed New Hampshire School Board Association Resolution. Those are in your packet. Anything in your packet in those resolutions that you don't agree with, we will want to let Board Member Barnes know. She's our rep. If you have any concerns, we need to let her know tonight. I don't have any concerns. Board Member Rothaus, do you have any?
No concerns.
Okay, so we can move on to the next item. New business other? Anybody have any new business? Board Member Rothaus?
So this is a blinker before the turn. At our next scheduled meeting, I will be making a motion to reconsider our contract with two revolutions, based not only on new information, but also in my opinion that it will be disruptive to our school district to move forward.
I will be sure to add that to the agenda. Any other new business? Nope. All right. Moving on to the approval of the minutes, the September 7th, 2021 minutes. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Made by Board Member Barnes, second by Board Member Rothaus. Any edits or updates? None? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? That's 3-0-0. The September 20th approval of the minutes. I mean, by...
Make motion to accept the minutes?
Motion by Board Member Barnes, I mean, by Board Member Rothaus, second by Board Member Barnes. Any updates or edits? Seeing none? All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none? That's 3-0-0. Next up is the consent agenda. Kimberly Yarlat.
Thank you very much. I have one retirement to report, and that is William Morris. And he was the real coordinator for the remote education students in the prior year. And before that, he was an administrator, assistant principal of JMU's, and he has put in for his retirement. I have some nominations for you. Nicholas Pierce as a social studies teacher at Merrimack High School. Megan Pelletier, elementary teacher, working between MES, Thorntons, and Reed's as a one-year-only position. And an administrator nomination, Fern Sidon, Director of Student Wellness, district-wide. And that would be a new position to the administration.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda made by Board Member Barnes, a second by Board Member Rothaus? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, that carries 3-0-0. Aye, that carries 3-0-0. Next up is other? Any committee reports?
So the 275th Committee is working with the Parks and Rec Committee. If everyone could just go on the Parks and Rec Committee website, you can see some fundraising ideas and some events coming up, which I think it's exciting that they kind of combined in the last meeting.
Board Member Barnes?
I'm going to put Kim on the spot. So the Professional Development Committee did meet, but because it was the first meeting and it was in-person, I was traveling, so I was unable to attend in-person. I was in a different state even. So is there anything other than the kickoff of the committee that would be helpful?
Oh, thank you, Shannon. Yes, we did put forward our revised professional, individual professional development plan or professional development to the Department of Education. They were pleased with our plan, did send it back for a few revisions that we're going to be working on. We've put a committee together to do, look at a couple of small details in the revision. And then the other piece is that we developed a survey for the professional staff and for the parent educators, a very brief five-point survey to get feedback about the August slash September academies and the professional development that was offered and ideas for the future professional development.
Thank you. And sorry I couldn't make it again. It was a bit of a long drive.
Moving on to correspondence. I have a number of correspondence to report. The entire board received two emails regarding two revolutions, two against masking requirements, one with questions regarding masking and school board governance, one was a concern regarding safety in schools and the concern regarding a grassroots civil disobedience situation, and one, just to thank you for making health and safety of kids a priority. I received a few to me only. One, I had two emails that were concerns about two revolutions. I had one email asking for the amount that was expended to two revolutions to date. I had one email with questions regarding two revolutions and two emails against masking. I had three other emails. One was to Board Member Rothaus and myself regarding concerns about two revolutions. I had one email to me and Matt Chevanel regarding a parent that had pointed out some errors in the COVID dashboard, which Matt fixed, so we thank that person for reporting that inaccuracy to us. And then we had, I had one email to me, Bill Wilson, to administrators regarding a concern for safety, also relating to the grassroots civil disobedience threat. Any other correspondence? Board Member Barnes?
I just have one that was a parent requesting that masks stay optional.
Board Member Rothaus?
And I had the same amount of correspondence that you did, Chairman of the Board.
Thank you. Any comments? Any comments from the board? Okay. This will lead to the public comments on the agenda items. We'll go ahead and resume the microphone. Again, all of the rules still apply. I ask that those who have not had a chance to stand up to speak be given the first opportunity if they have not spoken yet tonight. And then we will continue to alternate if we have any. We have none. Okay. So what we'll do then is we'll just go straight at the microphone and then we'll check on the mailbox before we close out. Gentlemen, please go ahead.
Chuck Moore, War Depot Street. I find that I must lend my voice as well to Mrs. Rothaus relative to the need to move on from two revolutions. I'd like to thank everyone who comes to a school board meeting. But it's not the only place you should come to. You should get involved in your students' schools, in the parent-teacher organizations, in all the committee work and so forth that's going on. There are numerous opportunities to participate, and we need people to participate. At the Budget Committee, it's very difficult, it seems, to get the public to come and engage in the cost of education as we consider what we are going to put before the people to vote on every year. Because after all, everything we do in the district must be paid for. And it's a large district, there are a lot of undertakings, and all of the things that parents would like to see happen, whether it's a corresponding secretary for the number of concerns that parents have, or whether it's new uniforms for the band, or whatever it is, must come and participate. Those opportunities are there. So I welcome everyone's participation and invite them to come to all of these meetings and organizations and so forth. I'd also like to bring to your attention, I believe once again, the need for some financial support for professional development. I'm very interested in hearing the results of the listening tours that you're undertaking relative to what the various schools think their needs are. We know there are new needs. And again, they must be paid for. So it's important that we, we learn the financial considerations almost as soon as we learn what those new considerations are. We definitely need training in competency assessment. We've had a great deal of difficulty in the school district relative to competency assessment. I don't think that the staff fully understands the same page that they must all be on. I'm sure some do it better than others, but I noticed that in the last year, it was almost impossible to find anyone that knew anything about competency recovery. And if you don't know about competency recovery, then you've lost most of your ability to actually competently assess students' learning. So I think that's extremely important. It costs money to train people. You can't just get a bunch of people together and say, hey, three of us know how to do this, and we're going to try to make the whole school at Thornton's Ferry or the whole school at the middle school or whatever accept our version of that training. It requires a consistent professional training approach that costs money. I also am concerned about separating 504 from student services. Having some experience about how services are delivered in the classroom, and again, I think that we need professional training to ensure that there's a consistency and an embrace amongst those three entities in the performance of any particular student's needs. So I'd ask you to deeply consider that. And I would like to ask you, I know how busy you are, I know all the demands that have been put upon you, but the sooner that we learn what the review is of the budget and the new needs that may be springing forth, the better off we all are to engage the public, let them consider it, have them come to a budget committee meeting and express their views, hopefully their support.
Just a 30-second warning.
Excuse me?
Just a 30-second warning. To keep our. Thank you. Who's next, please?
Hi, my name is Shannon Rand, One Blair Road. I took some notes. First of all, this is to you, Mr. Olson. The lunch program, I couldn't find. When you asked us at the last school board meeting for the parents to go out and get that lunch program and to, to do that paperwork, I looked high and low on the Merrimack School District. It was not there. I had other parents looking at it, too. It's, it's just not there. So if you want our participation, that needs to be visible on the front page in the Merrimack School District. Just some other thought, putting that stuff onto the Facebook Merrimack Moms Group. You tell them the reason why they need to do it, parents are going to do it because they want the free lunch for their children. That's my first thing. I think it was you, Ms. Cinda, who talked about foreign language, and I apologize if it was Rothaus or not. Okay. I love the fact that you were talking about having no mask. I also want you to think about this. What about our special education teachers who are working with speech with these children? That is also something that you need to think about. Special education, they have a really tough time, especially in speech. They're in there for a reason. I personally don't think my kid needs to wear a mask, but I think it is a choice by the parent. When you talk about, Mr. Olson, athletics, I appreciate you looking more into this. The baggie, I, I kind of cringe on that, I'm going to let you know. My kids have like five or six masks that they go to school with. If you're requiring them to wear a mask and take it off and when they're, when they're practicing or coming off the court and they're sweating, put a new one on. Just put the other one in a bag, have it washed if it's reusable or disposable, oops, or have it as a disposable. That's the way that you could get around that. And I think that's much cleaner and more sanitary than putting it in a brown bag or a plastic bag and having it wet and touching everything. Again, I think it's a parent's choice. And I just want to say that if a child is in sports, and they're in basketball, and they're in cheer, their parents know how close they are, that they're coming in contact with other students. Have them, if you want, do an opt-out so that you know which kids need to wear the mask and which kids don't need to wear a mask. That's how you get away with it. And then just, if you don't want the kids wearing it during that practice or that game, please have them bring their own, reusable or disposable, but don't have them put it in a baggie. I just, it's just very unclean. Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Next speaker?
Hey, how's it going? My name's Emile Rodriguez. I live on Tailquills Way. I just wanted to speak quickly about numbers. Everyone is so concerned with the numbers and percentages, putting a lot of weight in them, okay? In the last meeting I attended here, beginning of the current school year, right before the beginning of the current school year, sorry, there was an impressive PowerPoint presentation with graphs and statistics outlining the pandemic and positive tests. Okay? And this is the reason, one of the reasons why the board made the decision they made. Okay? My neighbors, who are also in the medical field, who spoke tonight and in the previous meetings, also echoed the numbers. And they're going up, and everybody's worried. Okay? Okay. Well, if you go to the FDA.gov website, I don't have a special presentation or anything like that, I just have some numbers for you, too. All right? There are 268 tests that should no longer be used, PCR and rapid response tests, okay, that were recalled by the FDA. Okay? I want to make sure that those tests weren't used in your numbers, because those numbers are false. Okay? I asked, all these numbers on the, the tests and the lists were not used in determining your numbers you have for masking our children. If you do use these numbers, you are complicit in fraud. These numbers are still being used in many medical facilities, unfortunately, because the FDA recalled them by December 31st. So the asterisks are the ones that are removed, but if you look at the list, which you can go to FDA.gov and find yourself, they're still being used. The numbers don't make sense. Masks don't make sense. You, the board members, dictating to me how to parent my child does not make sense. Let's make some sense. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hi, Jen Page, Nichols Lane. So I was the one who said something last time about, about not having that mixed policy for the athletes. Seriously. The AD has only seen them play here, and here they wear masks on and off. So he didn't see the shenanigans at BG when they did the mixed thing. They don't have time to put it in a bag. They barely have time when they get called up to get it onto their appropriate chair, which is why they were running away as they were, as they were dropping their masks and their masks were landing on the floor. Just let them play without the masks and seat them apart. I don't know about benches in basketball, but the girls in volleyball are on chairs. Seat the chairs apart, and then they're not on top of each other when they're on the sideline of the court. The mask on, mask off, mask on, mask off, running, that's a horrible, horrible idea. That's my opinion.
Hey, Ken Martin, Woodward Road. Just, I'd love, I'm a music teacher, so I love hearing that the chorus is going to be able to sing. I just want to, they have singers' masks that you can buy that are like, they're almost 3D, they look like, kind of like a duck bill, but they're really comfortable and they're like really cheap, too. So if you're going to let them sing and have a mask on, should definitely look into those because they work really well. Thanks.
Okay, Shannon, I'll let you go ahead and read one from.
Okay. So this came in in the last few minutes. It's again from Lindsay Tebow, 19 Pleasant Street, but we're going through seconds, so I interjected. So can we take the $76,000 set aside for two rev and put it toward rapid tests in our nurses' offices? So that was her request. And on to the next.
All right, thanks, ma'am.
Jeanne Fandozy, Mitchell Street. First of all, thank you, School Board Member Rothaus, for your recommendation to terminate two rev. You have my vote next election. On the masking, so some people here love to cite the CDC recommendations about masking and use that as evidence for why we need to mask our children. CDC makes a lot of recommendations. There's sunscreen recommendations. Do we enforce sunscreen before they go on the playground because they have a higher risk of skin cancer than of COVID? CDC recommends eating healthy. CDC recommends guidelines for not being obese. These are blatantly, obviously, visually ignored. Why are we listening to them about masks?
Next speaker?
Tiffany Castalucci, Babu Sique Lake Road. Earlier, Mr. Olson, you had stated that there was a number of opt-outs. It was like 1,200 and something. How many, what is the number of pullouts right now? That people, that pulled their children out of school? I, I would just like to know those, those numbers as well, because that does have a big play in the total numbers. Like, how many people have left the district? Is that something I actually have to email, or can you guys like give us an estimated?
I don't know if you know it off the top. Do you know it off the top? So we will.
That's something that I think the community has, has a right to know to, you know, weigh out the numbers, too. Okay? Thank you.
Yes, of course.
Kathy Comar, Belmont Drive. I actually did a FOIA request for some information, and one thing I just want to point out, Lori, thank you so much for trying to take the two rev off the table, because two rev is going to try and sneak underneath the parents' noses. They want to do a focus group and not surveys for our kids. You know why? Because you can't survey kids 18 and under in the state of New Hampshire. So there's another reason to get rid of them. They're going to try and sneak everything else in that they can.
Do we have any other speakers this evening? All right. Well, once again, I want to thank everyone for coming out. We do hear you. Your voices are heard, and I also want to thank you for being respectful. I will go ahead and entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Made by Board Member Barnes, second by Board Member Rothaus. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 That carries 3-0-0. Thank you and good night.